Excellent. Welcome to the Select Board meeting of March 11th. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So thanks, everyone, for being here tonight. I just want to let you know that this is a hybrid meeting, and it is being recorded and livestreamed. You will be able to go onto ECAT's website and look for this if you are watching or if you're at home and not able to watch tonight. And if you are watching from home or on Zoom, and you have a question for us, just put your question in the Q and A, and Sean will monitor that during the meeting. I'd like to just go around and have the Select Board members introduce themselves to ensure we have a quorum.
Jamie Steadens.
I'm Jennifer Stacy.
I'm Dottei Fulgenetti.
And I'm Craig Bodger.
And Selectman Mark Lamb is not able to be here tonight, so but we do have a quorum. So the first thing that we have is the announcement of the appointment of the new Deputy Director of Health and Community Services/Financial and Veteran Services, Tracy Levine. So, welcome, Tracy, if you want to come up. Kristen, if you want to come up, too?
While I'm Tracy and Kristen are on my way up, I'd just like to say a few words about Tracy, if you both want to come to the table. Really pleased to announce Tracy's promotion to Deputy Director of Health and Community Services for Financial Veteran Services. Tracy initially joined the team here in Easton in the wake of the COVID pandemic as a benefiting grants navigator in May of '22. She brings more than 20 years of experience in the field of human services and resource coordination, both in and prior to working in Easton. She is a graduate of UMass Boston with a Master of Science in Human Services Management. And anyone who's worked with Tracy knows, and, you know, she's incredibly skilled in researching assisting individuals with accessing public resources at the state, local, and federal level. And she's, you know, she walks the walk. She puts in the time. She really cares about the people she works with. She cares about the community. And she has been nothing but a huge positive for Health and Community Services and for the whole town since she joined. So we're really excited to be bringing her into this leadership role. We think she'll be doing wonderful things, so.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Do you want to just introduce yourself and tell us a little bit about your role so far in Easton?
Absolutely. As Connor said, I started as the Benefits and Grants Navigator. Love the folks here in Easton. So I'm just really beyond excited, honored, and humbled to take on this new position. And I do just want to share that my intention will remain the same. And that is always to focus on working towards community equity. I think that's one way we can build strong communities and how communities will strive. So one way that we've been doing that is aggressively pursuing any resources that are available at the state, local, or federal level. As a department, we will continue to do so. And just my short time being here, I've noticed that the department has like a collective pride in making sure that anybody who walks through the door will have access to any resources that we have access to. We have a no wrong door policy. There's nothing that you cannot reach out to us and ask. We might not have the answer straight away, but we are going to try to find any answer that can meet any unmet need. So, as I said, the goal will be just to promote self-advocacy, self-empowerment, and to just really focus on enhancing the financial health and social well-being of all the folks here in Easton. And I really do look forward to working with each of you in reaching that goal.
That's terrific.
Yeah.
Well, I think it's wonderful to be able to promote from within and that you were interested in doing this, that the timing was right in your life to take on more. We've worked on a couple of things together, and I just think you're an absolute angel. The work that you do is really, really tough work. You're so kind and compassionate and resourceful and reassuring. And I don't know how we ever had nobody in no position like that before. So I'm really grateful for this board and for the community for realizing what an important role that is and making sure it was funded, so.
Thank you, Dottei. I appreciate that.
Jamie, I'm going to start with you, if you want to go.
Tracy, nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you.
I've heard a lot of wonderful things. And I, too, was excited to hear that you were stepping up into this role. Thank you for what you've provided and continue to provide to our community. And I look forward to working with you in the future.
Absolutely.
I just want to congratulate you.
Thank you.
I really can't say it better than anybody else here, but we're really lucky to have you moving into this position and bringing all of your experience and compassion to a really important role for the community. So wish you the best of luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
I don't think you're going to need any luck. I think from what I understand, you've been doing a terrific job. And I'm very pleased for you and for the town and for, I think, for Kristen, too. It's going to be a nice thing to, right?
Oh, absolutely.
So welcome, and thank you for taking on this responsibility.
Okay. Thank you.
Also, while we had Kristen and Trace here, we wanted to just take two moments to just give a brief update on the Veteran Services Officer recruitment. That's ongoing.
Yep. So we are in the process. As you all know, the former Deputy Director was able to wear two hats at one time, one being the statutory requirement that we have a Veteran Service Officer while building up the entire department and furthering the mission of being able to wrap our services around our community. With the change to Tracy taking on that role, we now are in a position where we're going to be, we are in the process of hiring a Veteran Service Officer to work with Tracy to give special hands-on services that are required to the veteran community in the full-time capacity. We hope that we're going to see our first candidates on Friday, we hope. And we hope to move forward pretty quickly. We've got a, looks like a good pool of candidates in that grouping, so. More to come.
That's great. Well, your department has seen its share of changes over the years. And I was on the board when there was none of this. So I think that when we talk about our values and you look at our value statements, you know, on the website, caring about people in the community is really the main goal. And to be able to really have the resources for, you know, the support that you give, the mental health assistance that we have, the connection with the fire and police departments, and bringing all of those together to work together comprehensively, to care about people first. It's really amazing how it's all come together. So I want to thank you, Kristen, for your leadership through all of this time, including the age-friendly work, so.
Oh, thank you. It's an absolute honor to go to work someplace where the challenges just provide more and to wrap your arms around people and create bridges. And it's just a wonderful, wonderful way to approach every day, knowing my mission is to invest in better outcomes, whatever that may mean for an individual. We're just constantly investing in a better outcome.
That's great. Well, congratulations again. Thank you both for being here tonight, and we will see you around soon.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
The next item that we have timed items. Craig, will you read the notice, please?
The Select Board of Easton, as licensing authorities, will hold a public hearing at the Colleen A. Corona Boardroom, 136 Elm Street, Easton, Mass., on Monday, March 11th, 2024, at 6:00 p.m. to consider and act upon the application of Cousins Italian Cuisine LLC Doing Business as Leandro's Italian Restaurant and Tavern for an alteration of premises of an existing Section 12 All Alcohol License for premises situated at 402 Turnpike Street, Easton, Mass. for the plan on file in the Select Board's office.
So would you like to come up? And you can sit in those chairs if you'd like.
Hello. How are you? Good to see you.
Thank you for being here tonight. So if you'd just introduce yourselves and just kind of tell us what you want to be doing to change at the restaurant.
All right. I'm Michelle Leandro.
Yep. And I am like Manny Leandro. And our idea is doing the patio, just right next to where the, during the COVID, because we noticed during the summertime, our business dropped. And because of that, the employees that we have, it's working for us. We are forced to cut the hours. And we noticed they also get like less pay home. And with the idea with this patio is hope to keep the flow almost the same amount for the winter and summer. And we don't have to cut those employees' hours. We can keep them working almost the full time and they can get the pay the same amount to help the families and everything else. That is one of the main goals, the patio.
Well, who would have ever thought that outdoor dining would be so popular? It was, nobody really had it around here. There were a few places in Boston and, you know, people thinking that it's too cold in the spring, too cold in the fall. And now it's really caught a lot of the shoulder season on both ends for people to be out, especially if there's space heaters like some of the restaurants have. Just for people to remember, during COVID, we had some special provisions where we were able to allow businesses to have outdoor dining. And then we requested, you had to go in and permanently request that and go through the formal process of it. A lot of places already did that. But as you're saying, you know, you've noticed the difference. So it's great that you're doing that now. You've done site plan review with the people that have needed to see it and...
Yes. We did, I think, last year it was approved.
Yeah, we did that last year.
Okay.
All the site plans, everything else, send all the plans.
So this will be more permanent than...
Yes, definitely.
Yes.
Okay. Great. Any questions from anyone on the board?
I'm just going to agree that we, it's like the first thing we look for now is outdoor dining. And it has shifted. And if there's availability outside, then we say, hey, we'd love to sit outside. So I, too, think it's great. I think that in New England especially, and as we see our climate moderate more and we tend to have a shorter, you know, winter. It used to be four or five months, and now we're down to two and a half. So that leaves a lot of availability for outdoor dining, and I love it, so.
Did it change, like, we see, like, when we take reservations in the summer, the first question is, if you have outdoor seating. If you don't, they don't, they don't come.
Yeah. They want to find somewhere where they can be outside.
They go somewhere else.
Okay. Jen?
No questions, but I think it's a great idea.
I particularly appreciate your enthusiasm for your employees. That's really important to me, that you take care of the people that work for you. I enjoy your restaurant. My wife and I come to here quite often, so I appreciate this. And I wish you much success.
Thank you.
I agree. And, you know, it really is a challenge to make sure that your employees do get enough hours. A lot of places, particularly restaurants, have a hard time finding people to come to work because where they live in proximity to the restaurant. So we're glad that you're thinking creatively to be making sure that you're able to help your employees. So that was a really great point, Craig. So this application could be approved to contingent on all approvals from town departments and settlements of fees. So if you'd like to make a motion, Craig?
I move to approve the Cousins Italian Cuisine LLC Doing Business as Leandro's Italian Restaurant and Tavern for the alterations of the premises.
Second, Stacy.
That's Bodger and Stacy. All in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. Well, good luck. When do you think you're going to be finished with it?
I hope we finish in the next couple weeks.
Oh, great. Excellent.
We'll do it all the time.
Well, we'll have to come down and check it out.
Perfect. Perfect timing.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Continue your success, Gordon.
Okay. Next, we have road closing requests for the Children's Museum for their 27th Father's Day Road Race and Family Fun Walk on Sunday, June 60. We have this in the packet. They're asking to close, just the way they do every year, a portion of Sullivan Ave, beginning at the southernmost edge of the museum's property, adjacent to the edge of the museum's garage driveway, and continuing northward to the terminus of Sullivan Ave as it intersects with Mechanic Street from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. I think this is where all the runners are staged. Who runs in this? Jamie, do you run in this one?
I have.
And they, they'll have orange traffic cones to delineate the space. Staff will be wearing bright orange safety vests. And they plan to secure two police details the day of the event. There will also be a presence of EMT and support equipment. The request has been circulated to Public Safety and the Department of Public Works. And we could approve the road closing request contingent upon coordination with police and fire departments. And as usual, the applicant must apply for necessary temporary sign permits through the Inspection Services Department. So Craig, if you'd like to make a motion?
I move to approve the road closing request from the Children's Museum in Easton for Easton's 27th Father's Day Road Race and Family Fun Walk on Sunday, June 16th, 2024, from 8:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
Second, Stacy.
That's Bodger and Stacy. All in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. All right. Next, we have the Tricentennial Committee Updates. David Clifton, if you want to come up, and Dale Karister.
Nice. Almost behind, though. I'm over here.
Wherever you want.
Thank you.
You could put it in front of the table.
Well, you got to show the flag out here, you know, right?
Dale is the sign carrier, I mean, the vice chair.
Regular sign carrier.
I'd like to take this opportunity to express my appreciation to the Select Board for the opportunity to present to you an update of where we stand for 2025, 300th anniversary. Can you believe 300 years of history here in the town of Easton? I not only thank the Select Board, but I thank Connor Reed, our Town Administrator, his assistant, Sean. And let me not forget Elizabeth, because she handles all our calls. And sometimes I call more than I should. But tonight, I know that you have a lengthy agenda, and I thought that I could be brief. This may be the briefest I've ever been. The sign behind me is the logo. And it was done by Piper Finelli. And she did a terrific job. She has the skills as an artist to be able to do these things. And of course, this is the clock that was on Main Street. It goes way back when Lee Williams, Avery Lee Williams, delivered it to the town. I gave you some documents. This is another way that I can keep it brief this evening. And those documents include not only where we stand financially at the present time, but it gives you an idea of what the signature events will be for 2025. There's a document that tells you all the facilities that we hope to use. We're going to be adding to that list. That's the very last page you had. And on the very first page, it shows you the logo. It shows you what our theme is. And that theme is to bring families and community together. And that basically is the charge that you folks gave us as a Select Board, to be able to bring the community together, to be able to utilize all the facilities. And I know that I am so charged up over just the historic buildings that we have here in the town of Easton. And it's amazing how, as time goes on, we've been planning this since 2023. And then bingo, in the last month, we not only got donations for the celebration, we get lots of volunteers that are joining us. The Select Board put together 10 members. Dale and I are included. And we've increased it to all the coordinators that are going to run the different events. And I think the more people that get involved, and I think you'll see as a Select Board, that we're going to have hundreds and hundreds of people. It takes 35 just to run a parade. But you can imagine all the other events that you're going to see. And yes, some things are subject to change. And yes, there are things that we have to get approval from the Town Board. And yes, I hope that you'll invite us again. That's why I'm going to be briefed this evening, so you'll invite me back to finish what the celebration's all going to be about. We hope that the Select Board will cut the cake at the gala on December 27. We hope the Select Board will be in our parade and that you'll participate in all the events that'll be coming up. We have an awful lot to celebrate. I would like to ask Dale to throw in some stuff, and then I'll finish it up with some other things. And we're excited to see that the town of Easton, Massachusetts is celebrating 300 years. I say congratulations to the Board, to all the townspeople that may be watching here on ECAT, Eastern Community Access Television. We want you to get involved. If you don't march in the parade, we hope you'll watch the parade. There's going to be a bonfire. There's going to be fireworks. There's going to be a family picnic. There's going to be a gala. There's going to be an art festival. There's got to be something out there that's going to involve people of all ages that live in this very special community. Take it away, Dale.
Thanks, Dave.
Time's up. Okay.
Yeah, I was going to bring the stopwatch with me. I share in Dave's enthusiasm. And this is an extraordinary event, when you think about it, to be able for all of us to be part of something to celebrate our 300th anniversary. To think that this town was, you know, formed 50 years before the Revolutionary War, it's pretty darn neat. And one of my responsibilities is the community outreach. And one of the things we're focused on doing separate and apart and in addition to the signature events that Dave has listed in one of the documents you have, is to work with community organizations. So we've set up a community partner program. And we held an open house in January, and we're continuing to do outreach to all of our community organizations. So it's temples, it's churches, it's the House of Possibilities, it's the Unity Church, which, by the way, will be celebrating their 150th anniversary coming up in 2025. So a couple of their folks are coming to our brainstorming meeting tomorrow night. We've already been having outreach and interest from the VFW, Eastern Women of Today, Eastern Garden Club, the Grange, Knights of Columbus, the Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, Harvest Fair. So what we're really looking to do is build this up as a grassroots effort in addition to the signature events. And so we have a program whereby these organizations can fill out a form, reach out to us, look for permission to use the logo and their own materials. So it could be anything from the Children's Museum, tailoring their event that they might do anyway during the summertime, but tying it in a little bit more how do they fit within Easton's 300-year history. And doing that across the board with all these organizations. Dave and I will be doing a presentation for the Eastern Garden Club on Thursday night. We'll also be doing a presentation for the Grange. So it's extraordinary that the degree of interest in the community to jump on board. And this is one of those things that we are all in this together. And so I encourage the Select Board and all of the town departments and so forth to come join the fun in helping plan this. I think it's going to be really, really a lot of fun to put it together. And we've had an extraordinary outreach of volunteers coming to our meetings. How can I help? That's how folks are approaching it. So I really appreciate all the support from the town, from the Select Board in particular. And Dave, you want to bring it home within our 10-minute time limit here?
Yes. I did want to say, how are we promoting this celebration? While we do a TV show once a month. And my hope is to have members of the Select Board that are available to join me on the air as we talk about how lucky we are to live in the town of Easton and how important it is for people to give back to the community by participating in the celebration. We also hope to put up 80 banners. We hope to put them up on the parade route, Center Street. There are going to be banners that will be on the Main Street up to the chocolate place. And then we're going to put some banners up at Five Corners. We're working closely with Dave Fields. And he's working with the utility company. And we're excited about promoting it. Once these banners go up, people are going to know that there's a big-time celebration coming up in the town of Easton. I think we're going to be able to pay for the celebration when all is said and done. We hope to do something special for the town at the end of the celebration. And I know that I wanted to say to the Board how lucky we are to have the department heads that you have. They have been absolutely terrific. And I say that in case they're watching. They have been absolutely terrific. And I'm hoping that, I wanted the Board to know that. And to the people in the town of Easton, they were very fortunate to have very skilled people who give their time. They've all listened to us with a smile on their face, doing what they can to help us plan and prepare for the celebration. I'm getting close to the end. I did want to say that service has always been part of my curriculum over the years. And I always remember what Gandhi once said, and I quote, "The best way to find yourself is to lose yourself in the service of helping others." That's what you folks do as a board. And we're excited about this celebration. We want to pass that excitement over to all the townspeople. We're going to be overcrowded in every event. And not only are we having the signature events, but we're going to have all the events the towns had for years. We're going to put them on our master schedule and make sure that people know what's happening. And now I'm down to my final 10 seconds. Thank you, Dale, for being the vice chair.
My pleasure.
Any questions you might have?
Thanks so much for being here tonight. We appreciate it. And we do, we would love to have you come back periodically to keep us updated. I'll start with you, Jamie.
Yeah, I'm excited. I have three kids as well that are young. And this is an exciting time for them to experience not only the anniversary, but all the activities surrounding it and the buildup to it. And I have to say, the energy surrounding it in the very beginning of 2023 has felt like it was happening this, that year. And now that we're in '24, I have people ask me, when's the bonfire? I'm like, it's actually in '25. So the fantastic thing is the energy is already there. The, you're doing, that means you guys are doing a fantastic job in promoting it. And it's, I think, like you said, every activity is going to be absolutely inundated with participants. And you're going to have more and more people coming out to come volunteer and help out and pledge, so thank you.
Thank you for your kind comments.
Jen?
I just want to thank you both in the committee for, but it's clearly a lot of work and will continue to be a lot of work, but for a very great cause. It's really, really exciting, the effect this will have on the community, bringing folks together and just kind of having that shared communal cause to celebrate. So thank you for that. I really appreciate the focus on some key events. And then instead of, you know, spreading too thin, working on branding and partnering, I think that's a good strategy and a really great way to kind of keep the awareness there by having those kind of keystone opportunities and then a consistent reminder. So that's a good approach. As far as things go, if folks are interested in volunteering, will you be putting that information up on the website listed here? Or should they email, the email address provided? What's the best approach?
Yeah, folks who are interested can email. So it's easton300.2025@gmail.com. We need to update our website, but we are going to be including sort of an online volunteer form on that. We also, we already have some information about the Community Partner Program along with a form that people can fill out. They can fill out, send it back by scan or by mail. And so we're very much looking forward to as many folks as possible jumping aboard. We are blessed in this town with so many phenomenal people getting involved with community service organizations. And Dottei, you remember this as a Lion, you know, we did a celebration of Easton right before, literally the week before COVID shut everything down. And we honored our community service organizations. And we put a show on a spotlight on House of Possibilities, among other organizations. And just a phenomenal amount of people doing the same, trying to help others in town. And it's, now we have this series of events for the entire year, and we're giving the opportunity for those folks to jump on board. And most importantly, you know, to work together on these things. I mean, I think that that community connectedness. So it's really part of what makes Easton special.
And we have a post office box. And we have a post office box. Guess what the number is? 300. And of course, that's the depot location, 02334. People have great ways to contact us. If we don't hear from them, we'll knock on their door at some point. We want everybody to be involved and to enjoy as a family. This is a great family community.
Both my kids are in scouts, so I'm sure they're going to be excited to find all the opportunities. They love getting involved in town stuff.
It's a great opportunity for them to join in.
Yeah, excellence.
I am very impressed with the work that you guys have done. Dale, I don't know when you sleep with all the different things that you do.
I just don't do any of my paid work, that's all.
But I'm very excited about the opportunity to celebrate 300 years, and I very much look forward to 2025.
So I was saying, this is a once or maybe a twice-in-your-lifetime thing if you're a baby now and you get through another couple of 50 years, two more 50 years. But it really is exciting when this comes to a community to be able to really showcase the people, the places, the things to do. And it's no accident that there were several Lions recruited to be a part of that. So, you know, the Lions Club is probably the biggest organized group of grassroots volunteers that we have, but also has such strong connections, like you were saying, with the other grassroots organization and different clubs. We work better together, and everybody is stronger when we work together. We have been talking about this in the cultural district meetings, and, you know, Joan from the cultural district is now part of your team as well. So getting that information streamlined back and forth to all of the different partners, you're doing a really great job with that. So even though you might not see us there, we're hearing it through Mark, we're hearing it through Joan, through other people that we're working with.
Hats off to a very active Lions Club in the town. I happen to be a Rotarian, have been for a number of years, past district governor, but I'm happy to participate in a leadership role. It's going to be an exciting thing, and we'll be coming back again with some more great news.
Well, if you want to join the Lions Club, I'm sure Dale can say, has anyone ever asked you? See, I'm hearing Lee Williams in the back of my head now saying, has anyone ever asked you to join the Lions? And I've been thinking a lot about Lee Williams this week because, of course, he always was asking people to donate for the 300th. He was talking about this years ago when it was like Lee. That is so far off into the future, but he was really, he wanted to be here for this. And the cultural district is having an art show, I think it's April 4th or 6th, whatever that Saturday is. And we're going to remember Lee in his love of the arts and culture there. We're going to have his Elvis impersonator contact there that is going to be performing, and his family will be there, so you're welcome to come as well. But he's definitely been on my mind this week, so it was nice to see his mention tonight.
I looked up a donation that he made. He went to a select board meeting a long time ago, and he presented the select board with $10,000 to go towards the 300th anniversary. And it multiplied to $54,400 that we had as seed money when we began planning this celebration. So we're going to recognize him in different ways, so.
We'll make him proud. Well, thank you.
We all look out of gratitude.
We appreciate you being here, and thank you for the props.
I'll be marching off now.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Steve.
Dave, is this ours to take?
Yes.
Okay. So next, we have contract award, PCD 2023-04, change order one for BSC Group. It's additional services for the redevelopment of Swift Park.
Sure, thank you, Dottie. So attached to the board's packet is a memo from the director of Planning and Economic Development, Stephanie Danielson. That lays out the explanation here for the $6,700 change order. But the short version is as the design enters its final phases, there has been some assessment that the layout would require some formalized parking on the north side of a site, which will cut into an existing right-of-way easement over the site. Conversations have unfolded with the property owners who have those easements, and it's been agreed that an easement can be shifted to the north, thereby creating space for the parking. But granting an acceptance of those easements will require an easement planned specifically for that purpose. The creation of such an easement document was not in the base contract, so the change order here will pay for the preparation of the necessary documents to keep this moving. So I recommend award.
And that change order is $6,700?
That's right, and it would be funded out of the existing planning economic development consulting budget.
Okay, excellent. Anybody have any comments or questions?
I move to contract award, PCD 2023-04, change order number one, BSC Group, additional services for the redevelopment of Swift Park in the amount of $6,700.
Second, Stacy.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. Discussion for the establishment of the Easton Committee for Climate Action Planning. This is pretty exciting.
I hope so, yes. So thank you, Dottie. One of my formal goals for the current fiscal year is to recommend to the board a roadmap to Easton to plan for and adopt a climate action plan. This is something that we've been discussing for a couple of years now, a best practice that is something desirable for a community like Easton, and particularly because we have done a lot of good work in a lot of different climate, energy-related areas between being one of the first adapters of the Green Communities Committee, energy commitments, meeting those 20% municipal energy power reductions, leaning into solar, LED, power purchase agreements, ESCO projects. But it's been done on a kind of ad hoc basis. There's no guiding master plan for it. And so this has been something we wanted to focus on. If you actually look at Envision Easton, drafted in the early 2010s, published in 2014, there's actually not an enormous amount of emphasis on climate resiliency, which obviously that has shifted quite a bit in the planning space in the past 10 years or so. So this has been something we've wanted to do for some time, but as is no surprise to the board, we really, we just lack the bandwidth to do something like this in-house. So one of the many attributes Sean brought to the table during the interview process is that he has worked in communities that have done climate action plans and has some experience to bring there. And so Sean and I have worked together this fiscal year, sought funding, received a $100,000 grant from the Commonwealth to fund a climate action plan in Easton. And so to get this moving, now that we have the grant in hand, Sean and I have developed the draft charge that's in your packet for the establishment of a committee for climate action planning, hopefully to be belovedingly known as CCAP, although it's draft, so if you all hate that acronym, we can work with it. Along with a draft timeline for what we think will be probably two years' worth of work involved with developing and implementing a climate action plan. It's important to us, and we've done, just kind of some background here, some prep work. We've met with a lot of different, not only consultants in the space, but also with colleagues in other communities that have been on the municipal side of a table, folks in nonprofit spaces who have worked on this stuff too, to get input from a variety of different communities and different stakeholders to develop the timelines that we're working with here, as well as the draft committee charge. It's, I think, important. We want to make sure that there's broad representation from boards and committees, but also from residents and from builders and developers on any committee, because very likely, a lot of the recommendations that come out of a plan like this have to do with energy codes, building codes, certain weather, either voluntary incentive-type structures to incent certain things like EV, or, you know, if town meeting adopts requirements. And we want to make sure that we're not kind of just speaking with ourselves on that and that we are deliberately welcoming into the process folks with a perspective from the trades, so that, we want to make sure that at the end, we have a slate of recommendations here that are achievable, not just a report that goes on a shelf. So there's a draft timeline in here, there's a draft charge. We did, Sean and I were not asking for the board to adopt the charge tonight because we want to get this right, wanted to give it to you, hopefully get some feedback from you folks before maybe you adopt it at your next meeting or first meeting in April. So Sean, I don't know if you want to...
You covered most of it, but yeah, we did look at what other communities have done. There are a number of other area communities like Hingham, Norwood, Harvard, Milton, that all have climate action planning committees, so we gleaned some inspiration from them as we put together this draft charge.
Just go to Sean's memo, there's really kind of four, I think, yeah, four major items here, and we're at step one, right? Forming a committee for climate action planning and building a project team. So we have that committee charge of first, order of business for this committee. Sean and I have some draft materials we're working with, but we would be issuing an RFP for consultant services to utilize that grant, to bring in some experts in this area to help guide the work of the committee. And it would be my plan and recommendation that we treat that committee as basically an RFP review panel, so they would do a qualifications-based solicitation, rank those proposals, and ultimately make a recommendation back to the select board, do a award, a contract, and get that work moving. From there, want to do some baseline building, right? So both doing an audit of our existing policies and programs in this area to get a baseline of, you know, what is Easton doing now across, you know, the kind of climate continuum? Where are we, you know, taking a leadership role? Where are areas that we can improve and do more in? That's kind of a policy and programmatic baseline, but we also need to do a greenhouse gas emissions baseline as well, right? And so those are going to be the two kind of foundational pillars against which identifying opportunities for improvement need to be backward-looking at, right? So that the committee can make recommendations, doing work with a consultant, getting input from the community on different policies, programs, or actions that the town may take to make progress against both the policy and programmatic perspective, but also the actual net amount of greenhouse gases that are being emitted in the community.
Excellent. Well, Jen, I know this is something that you care a lot about and that you were really advancing and talking to Connor about trying to move this forward, and that's how it got on the goals and objectives, so I figured I'd hear from you first.
Yeah, no, I think this is fantastic. And one of the questions I have is around the time you have two years, and if there are things that can be done, are things being rolled out or is it planned to put forth in the two years? We kind of act on it, like, I'm just kind of thinking of timing, because there's so much urgency right now about climate that...
Sure. So admittedly, I have not done this project before, so I can't lean on my own experience.
I know I'm asking you questions that you might answer too.
But I think Sean's works of convenience where this happens. I mean, this is typically from where we are now, which is basically project inception, funding in hand, or we at least have funding in hand, actually. That's a huge step.
Yeah, grant funding, which is fantastic.
Grant funding, not local money. But between the RFP, bringing that team on board, I think, because we don't have these comprehensive baseline documents, that's going to take a series of months just to get there.
Yeah.
So that...
Some of them are lower-hanging fruit, so to speak, some of the recommendations. So that's what, in section three, we had talked about organizing them into small, medium, or high, medium, and low priority items. Some of them will be very easy items that we'll be able to just tack off pretty quickly, but other things will just take a little bit more investment in time to be able to implement in the organization. So it just depends, but some will happen more quickly, and we'll see more action and movement on that sense. But just, we're going to rely heavily on the client, the consultant to...
Folsom as well will drive.
To let us know what's more realistic and what works best, because the climate action plans in the different communities that we've looked at are all tailored to the specific needs of the makeup of that community. But what works for Easton won't necessarily work for Lexington and vice versa, so they're going to give us a recommendation based on the needs of our community. So hopefully, some of those will be able to move along more expeditiously than others that, and others just might take a little bit longer to get going.
And these baselines of data will give us really good information to start thinking about things in such a holistic way, so it's very exciting.
Yeah. It'll be very good.
And I think it's important, too, that there are other projects in the space that are happening right now.
Yeah.
Probably like the MVP 2.0 program, but it's focused more on climate resiliency. One of the things that social resiliency, whereas the first MVP plan was more looking at infrastructural resiliency and wetlands restorations, things of that nature, one of the things that we have noticed when looking at other communities that are a few years ahead of us, frankly, in these projects, is that a lot of them will have a kind of multi-pronged wheel, like the spokes of a wheel, and in certain aspects of that, like resiliency, we already have a planning process unfolding for. So that may allow us to move a little quicker in some other areas, but we felt it was important. You've all worked with me for a very long time. I would rather be more conservative in the timeline I lay out now and over-deliver than say we'll have it done in six months.
Definitely a balancing act, and I appreciate that. I mean, my thought was that if there's things we can do as things move along, then that would be...
Certainly. I mean, if there's things that come out that are, particularly things that are more administrative or programmatic on our level, if it's within our funding capacity, we can get moving on some of those things.
Fantastic.
I'm more thinking, when we say two years, or really, we've targeted fall town meeting of '25, which is really 18 months, not '24, we're thinking more that depending on the size and ambition of what this report is recommending, some of those actions would have to go to town meeting.
Absolutely.
Right? So it's going to be on the six-month cycle of either spring or fall. Things that are lower-hanging, that are either administrative or policy level, if it's something that we think is doable, there's certainly no reason we couldn't spin it off and get it moving.
Excellent. Thank you.
Jamie?
I'm just excited about how this may mesh to with the Green Communities Committee. And there are things that, you know, that group, that's just, it's not within their scope or bandwidth maybe, but could certainly be a really great partner in a lot of the work, so.
Yes, and we are proposing that at least one member be a rep selected from Green Communities. And again, we really would, being honest, we haven't led this process. If there's feedback on the particulars, we're happy to hear it now or in the lead-up to the next meeting. But as far as membership, looking at a representative from our office, which will be Sean, select board, conservation commission, Green Communities, planning board, a member who's a resident building or tradesperson, a member who's a commercial building or tradesperson, and at least two at-large residents. And we're envisioning this, and what seems to have been successful in other communities is you have that core committee, which is a public committee, a meeting law committee. But especially when you're working with a consultant, you'll do a lot of kind of charrettes and hands-on planning activities that you really kind of intentionally solicit feedback from certain communities, where if you're going to be, you know, really focusing on, you know, HVAC systems for municipal buildings or standards of that nature, you're going to want to make sure you're inviting in obviously code officials, people who work in that space, people maybe from municipal building committee. But we are proposing one of the permanent seats be from Green Communities.
Great.
Christina, I love that.
Craig, any comments?
My focus right away is on the $100,000 grant. I am impressed, again, with our ability to go out and get these grants. I don't think the general public realizes how much work that goes into it and how successful we've been with grants and allowing us to do this.
Sure.
Without paying, without having money coming out of taxpayers' pockets.
Right.
Which I think is excellent. Excellent.
Well, one of the things that I would say is that you can't get any projects done without laying out, you know, the table setting by having these plans and research done before to see where you want to go to implementation after that. And I work with a lot of communities in the state in my day job, and one of the things that I notice is many of them never refer back to the plans that they have, like their master plan or their housing production plan. And I think that we use that, like, it's on the table. When I was on the Economic Development Council, we had that printed out at every meeting, looking through, did we check this? Did we check that? I know the master plan, we've looked back on that to see, you know, how we're doing with that, which I think we're pretty soon going to have to be doing an extra vision of that as well.
We are. We got a $60,000 grant as well to do a 10-year update on that.
See? So, but these are things, like Craig said, we wouldn't be doing any of these plans without this grant money.
Exactly.
And if we didn't have the grant money and we didn't do the plans, we wouldn't have a lot of the things that we have in town, you know...
Infrastructure grants, things of that nature.
Exactly. And, you know, I think that we've been doing a lot of this intentionally and intuitively with, you know, planning for the new school, talking about what is the best energy savings in the new school, building it ready for solar, the same thing with the new municipal buildings, having the municipal aggregation where you could have your, you know, people in town, actually, thinking about choosing which kind of energy savings they would like, and do they want to incorporate green energy? I noticed new EV chargers out in the parking lot today, also from a grant.
Yes.
And, you know, there are a lot of things that we've done, looking at, you know, ways to improve energy consumption, and this is a really big deal, so I'm excited that this is coming forth. I know that we've all wanted to do this for a while. I thank you, Jen, for really championing this. I think that's really great about the select board members is that we each have something that we're passionate about, and we really try to, you know, match that with the right person and support them, and we'll do whatever we can as a board to support the work that, you know, that this committee will do, so.
Awesome. So if there's any particular feedback, we're happy to hear it now. If not, I guess we would just ask if the board would kind of go through the two, the charge with a fine-tooth comb, make any recommendations back to Sean and I, and we can do a track change document for the next meeting. The charge is also public, it's in the packet, so if you have folks, you know, citizens who you think may be interested in this and you want their feedback, it's obviously by virtue of being on TV, as we're watching right there, not a state secret, so we're happy to get some feedback on it. We want to make sure we get it right out of the gate.
Excellent.
And have a good team going. But we're excited, and Sean did really great work pulling a lot of this together, so I appreciate him for that.
And it's exciting to have a community like Easton to be able to push this forward. It's one of those things that will document a lot of the great things that we're already doing, and then chart a course forward for what the future looks like, too. So it's a really great document to have in our toolkit.
Well, the state has climate goals for 2030 and 2050, so, you know, like you said, this has been done in other places. I think we'd still be close to the head of the pack on this, but also, the technology is emerging so quickly and changing. Even, you know, the wind energy, by the time a particular, the wind farm off of Martha's Vineyard gets fully deployed, it's, all the products are going to be changing already, you know, and it's just amazing how fast things have moved ahead. Even with solar, you know, just a few years ago, it wasn't really achievable for people, and now solar's all over the place, so. place, so.
That's true.
Excellent. Well, great. Thank you for moving this forward.
Thank you.
And we'll take a look and give you some updates. All right, next we have the acceptance of a resignation for Tim McCall, the Zoning Board of Appeals, with a seat expiring June 30th. We received Tim's resignation. We appreciate the many years that he has served on the ZBA. He was also on the Economic Development Council, and I worked with him there. He's, he's a great contributor, and we will miss him, but appreciate the time he offered us. So Craig, if you want to make a motion?
Move to accept the resignation of Tim McCall from the Zoning Board of Appeals with a seat expiration of June 30th, 2025.
Second, Stacy.
That's Bodger and Stacy, and it'll be a roll call vote. I'll start with you, Jamie.
Stebbins McCall.
Stacy McCall.
Full Janetti McCall.
Barger McCall.
Okay. We also have the acceptance of a resignation with Peter DeShenz from the Planning and Zoning Board. His seat expires also on June 30th. Okay. What I'm looking at was cut off on mine, 2025.
2025, yeah.
So I move to accept the resignation of Peter DeShenz, Planning and Zoning Board with a seat expiration of June 30th, 2025, and thank him for all his work he's done on the zoning, on the, on the MBTA zoning project.
Second, Stacy.
That's Bodger and Stacy, and a roll call vote again?
Stebbins DeShenz.
Stacy DeShenz.
Full Janetti DeShenz.
Barger DeShenz.
And thank you, Peter, for the great work that you've done on the planning board. Next, the review, May 20th, 2024, annual town meeting warrant draft.
It is the most wonderful time of the year. It's town meeting time. Attached in your packet, as well as online, from public, is the first draft of the annual town meeting warrant for May 20th, 2024. That'll be at 7:00 in the Oliver Ames High School. Not an enormous warrant as far as the number of articles, but a lot of really significant and important content, as is typically the case earlier. In the warrant review process, we usually start out with some of the more routine items, because the more consequential ones, financial ones are still being finalized. So you have Articles 1, 3, 4, and 8 before you tonight. Happy to just walk through each of them and let you know inclusion and recommendation positions that I think are worth taking. So Article 1 is the acceptance of annual reports. This is the annual vote to accept the town report. So same as every year, I would ask for the board to consider including and recommending Article 1.
I move to include and recommend Article 1.
Second, Stacy.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Article 3, elected officials compensation?
Article 3 is required by town charter. This is the stipends for three of our boards and the moderator. I would ask the board to include and, and recommend, although there's been discussion around this item in the past, so if you don't want to take a recommendation position necessarily, that's obviously your, your right. It's the same as it's been every year.
Yeah, I'll recommend to include and, and include and recommend Article 3.
Second, Stacy.
Bodger and Stacy, roll, not a roll call vote, all in favor? Unanimous. And Article 4, payment of bills from a prior fiscal year?
Article 4 is housekeeping for now. We do not have any outstanding bills, but we always include this up until the night of town meeting in the event one arises. So I would just ask for...
Do we want to just include and not recommend?
Yes, please.
I mean, don't say anything about recommend.
Yes, the absence of a recommendation.
I move to include Article 4.
Second, Stacy.
So that's Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. And Article 8, rescind borrowing authorization?
Sure. Article 8 is financial housekeeping. Anytime we have borrowing authorized for a capital project that we end up not needing, because it comes in either under budget or refunded from other sources, it's good to get that debt authorization off your books. So this is to rescind 1.37 million in change of borrowing authorized under Article 19 of the May 2017 annual town meeting, which was originally appropriated for Depot Street water mains, no longer needed as the project is complete.
Okay.
You want to include and recommend?
Yes, please.
Move to include and recommend Article 8.
Second, Stacy.
Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous.
Sorry, I am in favor.
All right. Article, I mean, item number 10, acceptance of the minutes of February 26th.
So I'll move Bodger.
Second, Stacy.
Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Town administrator notes?
I have none prepared.
Anything from you, Sean?
Tonight is night two of Citizens Academy. Last week was week one, and thank you, Dottie, for stopping by. We have a really great group of about 15 residents who are part of this third cohort of Citizens Academy that's been really awesome. They had tons of good questions. We went way past overtime, and we had really great discussion, and I think we've really opened some eyes. We actually had a, a new thing that we're doing this year where we ask a question at the beginning about what perception they had of government before they started the program, and then we'll revisit it at the end. And some of the responses were just really remarkable, like, I didn't know that the town did this, or I didn't know that they did that in person, so I'm, I'm excited to see how that might shift and shape 10 weeks from now.
Excellent. That's great.
Yeah, I had an opportunity to talk to one of the former members of the Citizens Academy. He's very excited to be able to present to people his experiences and how much he enjoyed doing it.
Great. All right. Select board notes. Jamie?
I'll just say, I had the opportunity and the pleasure to be on-site 26th Quanticet when we were doing the ribbon cutting for the new South Shore Habitat for Humanity project. And great job by Connor, Stephanie. Did Kristen speak as well?
Wayne did, as well as Holly McLennan, who is the superintendent of Southeastern Regional Schools, whose students are helping out with the project, which is really awesome.
Yeah. So it was amazing, because the students were on-site, so we had a lot of the seniors that will be participating there, and what an amazing collaboration. And for someone, as, as this board knows, that lives across the street from that school, from Southeastern Regional, and also has the next project kicking off in the fall on my street, it was fun to, now, those won't be the students, because they're seniors and they're graduating, but fun to talk to them and talk to the superintendent about the project where they'll literally be able to walk across the street and work on the next one. So fantastic collaboration. I'm excited. I met the chairman of the, Mr. Halverson, chairman of the South Shore Habitat for Humanity, as well as the new project manager that was just hired on, Sherry Green, who's going to oversee this project, as well as the project on, on my street, and she comes from Western Mass, so actually commuting in from there, but saw this as compelling enough, you know, number of projects to be involved with, to, to share her expertise and, and be the project manager on both these projects. So fantastic.
That's great. Jen?
Very exciting. I'm just going to add to that and give a shout out to Wayne Beitler, Nikki Dustumian, and the Affordable Housing Trust, for what they put into this. I'm part of that, the trust, and it's been a topic on the agenda since I've been there, so it was really exciting to see this come to this point, three years later.
Yeah. Well, they have days where you can volunteer as groups, so maybe we should do that up as a select board.
That would be awesome.
I'll do it on a day.
That's the place where you thought you were going to give coffee, and they put your, put tools around anyways.
I'm going to be clear, explicit this time. I mean, coffee and pass tools.
I just have one thing. Our synagogue last week had a speaker from the Better Business Bureau on scams and fraud. Well-attended, she was terrific. I passed it on to Joe Pitti for use, for potential use at Health and Community Services. I was amazed at the, the volume of questions people had, and the fact that many, not many, some of the people in the audience had, had been conned in some of those scams, which are ama, it's incredible. And the one thing that I found most fascinating was when somebody asked her, well, what groups get, are the most susceptible to the, these scams, telephone scams, computer scams, et cetera, 20 to 30-year-olds. I thought it was the elderly. 20 to 30-year-olds are the most susceptible to it.
Wow.
So that was a fascinating thing. But anyways, I gave it to, passed it on to Joe today, so he has that information for her. Her name is Danielle Bass. She was very, very good, so.
Take notes, not to click any links.
No, it's terrifying. I was reading an article today, I forget if it was at work or where, but it was saying they were using AI cloning to actually, like, have a conversation in some family member's voice, and like, you wouldn't be able to tell the difference. It's so realistic.
Yeah.
The phone calls to, to the elderly saying, Grandma, I'm in jail, I need money, and the number of people that actually fall for that. I noticed it at one of the banks in town, when there was an elderly woman went in and she was asking for a significant amount of money to be out, and they, they tell her, actually said, can you tell me what, what you need the money for? And, and so they were, they were concerned, too. So that was, yeah.
Terrifying. Well, the district attorney's office was in here a few years ago. I recently bumped into DA Tom Quinn, and we might invite him back in the summer, but that is one of the things that he prioritizes also, is his division spends a lot of time in the communities with the, I think they have presented to the Triad Committee here in Easton, but he's also getting the word out about those type of things that they're seeing. So I think the timing is great for that. Well, the, the thing that I wanted to say is I got invited to the Blanche Ames Elementary School to read a book last Friday morning to a kindergarten class for Read Across America. Jen was there. Was that the most fun thing ever?
It was so fun.
It was like the best thing all week, and these little kids were so cute and so smart, and I read one of the Dr. Seuss books, and like, I would pause, and then they would all, like, say the second sentence. So it was a lot of fun, and at the end, two little kids ran up and hugged me, and it just made me miss when my kids were little, and although my kids were never that well-behaved in a classroom, I don't think. But, but I just want to thank all the teachers and Sam Cedarbaum for extending the invitations and having so many people come in and read. It was a really great day.
That's wonderful. I got to read to my kid's first-grade teacher's class. They've been away from first grade for years now, but it was fun to actually see her classroom in Blanche Ames. Last time I saw her, it was in Barrow Hall, so.
That was the first time I had seen the school with people, like, children in it, because we had tours, you know, when there was nothing, no coats hanging on the coat racks, no decorations in the room, so it was nice to see it being well-used.
Beautiful, beautiful building. Every time I go in there, I see things I didn't notice before, so.
All right. Well, with that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
So I'll move Bodger.
Second, Stacy.
Bodger and Stacy, all in favor? Unanimous. Thanks. We'll see you in two weeks.